Good evening, everyone. Tonight is August 24, 2022. It's 6:30 PM, and I'd like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. It will be an interactive, hybrid-technology format, so we'll have roll call votes, as we've had in the past. Our first order would be to join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Join if you'd like to.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B is the consent agenda. Would someone make a motion to approve, please?
This is Sue. I can, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda, items three through 10.
And is there a second?
This is Shelley. I'll second it.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at the public open forum?
Good evening. I'm John Waldock, 13824 Lake Drive. And I just, I'm just going to run through a couple of things and then ask a couple of questions. Don and I are not developers. We have commercial industrial landowners in Columbus. A few years ago, we went to the city to develop and market our land to commercial buyers. Everyone at the city was helpful, leading us through the process. We had Street Smart, last fall, we had Street Smart and Park Constructors under contract. Dean suggested that we put a 50-foot conservation easement on the north side of our property, as there was a 60-foot easement to the, pipeline easement to the west side. Dean also explained the process of getting a permit, having a tenant receive a CUP. You go through a series of meetings with the city and the Planning Commission, back and forth, back and forth, until you receive the okay to get a permit. April of '22, the city approved us to go ahead with building the road, and Street Smart received their permit to build. Park had submitted their application for the permit. In April, I stopped by the Wagamans to talk about the project. Sue was home and Steve was not. Sue and I had a cordial talk, and she had mentioned dismay of looking at Blake Drilling across the field, but they were fairly happy with the tree buffers at that point. And that was not our project. That was another project across there. The next morning, Steve Wagaman called me, and he said he was not real happy about losing the cornfield. And then we discussed the park construction, and the conversation got a little heated. And he told me he would, he would do everything in his power to stop this project. One week later, I had some questions on utilities as we were moving forward, and I called the city, and no call back. A little, little concerning. At the time, I was, I was assuming, probably because Ben was leaving and there was a lot of, you know, turmoil, or not turmoil, but things changing. So, so at any rate, I didn't get that call back to talk about that. On 5/11, the city council meeting, there was a motion, Sue Wagaman, to direct the city attorney to draft a moratorium on the Commercial Industrial District on Lake Drive. She Wagaman brought up the proposal at the previous night's workshop of the moratorium to allow the city to resolve a discrepancy in what it would allow in that area. Elizabeth called Don and I to let us know the moratorium was going to go into effect, and, and they were hoping to plan to expedite and have it done within a couple of months. A week later, Transport, another company we had under contract, had to back out because of the moratorium. At last, city council meeting, Janet had mentioned that we have been, that you, they had been talking about this moratorium for a year. I can't find any of that mentioned in the, you know, going through the meetings, except for, you know, the homeowner business, business home having a moratorium. I'm here today to find out where we go from here.
Mr. Mayor and Council, before the council addresses the Walt, Mr. Waldock, I want to remind you that there've been a flurry of letters from lawyers, and so I want to take some care what we state on the record. I'd like to, any discussion in response, Mr. Waldock, should focus on the process going forward to amend the ordinances, not the process for adoption of the moratorium. Because I don't, I don't necessarily want to get into a back and forth on how it was adopted, why it was adopted. We believe it was validly adopted. It applied to four or five different applicants who were all pending at the time. But that's not the subject matter for tonight. If you want to discuss, I think Mr. Waldock's asking, what happens next, right? Is that, am I understanding?
Well, and how, how soon is it going to be expedited?
Okay. And that, and I think that's a fair topic for discussion. I just wanted to have a clear line between kind of what happened to this point and what's happening after this point. Because what's happened to this point can be the subject of different opinions. It may be the subject of litigation.
Correct, correct. I just want you to know how, how we seen this go down.
Right.
That's really what we're looking for. And now we need to know how to go forward.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if, if you want staff to first address that, or if you want council to address that. I'm prepared to address that. I'm sure Ms. Mursko is as well.
Well, between the two of you. Go ahead. Bill, you can start.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I had a discussion earlier in this week as the status of the continued work on the ordinances. The first meeting that you will talk about your conduct, commercial, industrial, commercial industrial moratorium ordinances is going to be September 7. And then there will be a continued discussion on September 21. Those are both Planning Commission meetings. And then in addition, during those meetings, you'll, you'll continue discussion on your residential zone business moratorium on the 7th. And then also, we're going to talk about an ordinance amendment that has to do with the Freeway District, also on the 7th. So that meeting is entirely talking about ordinances during the Planning Commission meeting. And then the second meeting will be just the CI moratorium, which is September 21, as you have two applications, or they, the Planning Commission has two applications on that date.
So the first Planning Commission will be the 7th, and the second, the 21st, which is regretfully only three weeks away. Yikes. So, do you have anything to add to that, Bill?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, and also addressing the members of the audience. The council was very clear when it adopted this moratorium that you wanted the ordinances expedited, in part because there were four or five applications pending at the time. And, and there was discussion going back three or four months about the Lake Drive Commercial Industrial District, both at a staff level and at the council level. In any case, the process that we're following, so if you look at the Freeway District ordinances, it took two years to amend those ordinances. The, because of the council's direction, staff has come up with a process that hopefully will take the fall and be resolved by the end of the calendar year. So that's, in, in ordinance work, that's extremely fast. And, and we can't guarantee that the council will be done with their work by the end of the year, but at least we've given a timetable that it could be done at the end of the year.
So does that help you, John? I mean, it doesn't speed it up, but it is the timetable.
Well, it's the answer. And who's "they"?
What do you mean, "they"?
The, that's working on this moratorium.
Oh.
In, in the first instance, the city attorney's office, working with the staff, is, is developing a model for the Planning Commission to work with. The reason for that is if we don't start out with a specific model, then the process we followed in the past is to go through the existing code, almost line by line. And since this code has largely not been updated for 30 or 40 years, other than a couple of recent amendments, that was the preferred method to get it turned around quickly. So we are developing a model. We, being the city attorney's office, is developing a model. We have input from the planning staff and from the administrative staff. That model will first see the light of day, probably at the meeting on September 21. And then from there, the Planning Commission will comment on it. There will be a public hearing on it. So there's, there'll be an opportunity for the public and, and property owners to comment on the ordinance, and then it would go to city council for their action. And they, they could amend it. They could change it up entirely, but that's the, that's the process we're following. So the "they" is the staff and, and the city attorney's office with input from Planning Commission when it gets there, and input from the council when it gets there.
I'm just, you know, I mean, we got the approval to put this road in. Everything's going marketing, and now we're, we're stopped. Maybe the city of Columbus should write us a check for that road, and then you can have it.
No, that's not.
Yeah. I'd probably, you know, then.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to respond to that. Yeah, I'm, you're right.
But, okay. Well, let's get it moving forward.
Thank you, John. Anyone else, Don?
I'm John's older brother. Much better looking. So, council, you know, this is, I mean, we're just livid over this. You just have to imagine, put yourself in our shoes, put yourself in her shoes, who's looked across a beautiful field all these years, never paid for it. They hunted on it, all this. They think they still own it. They don't. And Mr. Attorney, it seems like you run this city, because anybody says anything, they look to you for guidance. I think you have a pattern that you can look at, a boilerplate thing, and charge them thousands of dollars for, that's already done from other cities. So nothing really has to be invented. It's already done. You just have to please this Wagaman family. That's all you have to do. That's how this started. Have the gumption to stand up to two people, or three people. One of them will be gone soon. Who, who knows? But it's just so upsetting to think that they can do that to a family that's been in this community since day one, long before they were. And our father left it to us for us to do what we thought. A pipeline going through it? What the heck? There's nothing else can go there. So just use common sense, not from some whack jobs that think they need, they own that property. They had opportunities to buy it. But you know what? They don't want it. They just want, I get it. But that's not America. Might be in their world, but in your world, it's not. Put yourself in our shoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
We do look forward to working with you, believe it or not. Not all of them.
Would anyone else like to come up? Hearing no one, we'll move on to number 12, the public hearing and discussion for Love's Travel Center, a 3-2 beer license request. And it's on pages three through 10 in our packet. So do we have to read it as published, Elizabeth?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Open public hearing notice.
You, you can waive the notice, reading of the notice.
I'm sorry?
You can waive reading of the notice.
Okay, we'll waive reading the notice. And then would we like to begin?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I just wanted to have you look on page five. There's this one edit that I need to make to the memo. And if you look at the public hearing notice, you'll see that Love Travel Center took on a new address, and there was a house previously at that address. But their new, their new address is 15402 Hornsby Street. And so just looking at page five in the memo, just want to make sure that the address, that you cross that out. It is, it is not 15444. That is the old house address to that property. And so the address should be 15402. And the reason why this is important is because we are licensing the premise, so the address is important. So with that, I'll turn it over to the attorney, as it's an attorney memo that outlines the background for the Love's Travel Center 3-2 malt liquor license.
Ms. Mayor and council, this was a provision in our ordinances. This is the one type of alcoholic beverage that can be sold generally in a grocery store setting or a convenience store setting. It's for 3-2, it's called non-intoxicating malt liquor. It's an off-sale license. We've gone through the license. You've got a report on background checks and so forth. And so it's pretty straightforward. One thing I would point out that's a little bit unusual in the state law has changed since we adopted our ordinance. So this may be a future change that the council wants to consider. But if you flip to page three of the memo, which is page seven of the agenda, you'll see condition number four, no person under the age of 18 years shall be employed in any rooms constituting the place in which intoxicating liquors or 3.2% malt liquor is sold. So that's a little bit antiquated. It's changed under state law. It's something that we can consider for a future amendment of the code, but that's actually in our, in our code. And so what that means is that nobody under 18 would be employed in the room where intoxicating beverages are sold. Just point that out, because it's a little unusual, and it's something I think that we're going to want to clean up in our administrative code.
Very good.
Other than that, we, Stanford, questions?
Does this mean that they can't hire anybody under 18, like 16 to 18 there?
They can, certainly in, in the two fast food locations, they, they can hire people under the age of 18. Our interpretation, given that it isn't state law anymore, would be, if, in discussion with Love's, we indicate that people selling at the counter will have to be 18 or above. So we're going to take a fairly liberal view of that since state law's changed, and suggest that only those behind the counter have to be 18. And then we'll get that cleaned up in an administrative amendment. Because otherwise, it'd be.
I guess I, I'm.
It's already, it's already hard enough to.
Well, exactly. And I, I've had a problem with this. And going on to page nine, I wasn't sure at the time who made up these rules about food being served and pizza not being included and all that stuff, you know? I, I don't know. The four entrees and, and all that.
That, that goes back to the incorporation of the city and the first liquor ordinance in the city. So prior council came up with that.
Yeah. Well, I guess I, I looked at that for a long time and thought that was just, you know, craziness. And I was upset about it for the track, because I don't know why you would, you know, insist that something can't be pizza. Pizza probably counteracts the liquor better than some of the other things. So I guess I, obviously, we need to clean up the ordinances, I guess, is what I'm saying.
More ordinance work. Thanks, Shelley. All right. So I'll make the motion to approve the 3-2 off-sale malt liquor license in the identified cooler area, as depicted in A-102 for the Love's Travel Center at the convenience store located at 15402 Hornsby Street, subject to conditions one through four as outlined in the city attorney memo dated August 24, 2022. Is there a second?
This is Shelley. I'll second it.
I have a question. Is, does any other state sell 3-2 beer?
I think we're the last.
So what happens when they, if they decide to allow them to sell 6%? Then we got to redo another application?
Mr. Mayor and council, in this state, we have the concept of an exclusive liquor store. If you've ever been to our neighboring state of Wisconsin, you, they can sell it in hardware stores and drugstores and grocery stores. That type of amendment has not passed the legislature. Primarily, it's the liquor stores that are holding on to the old rules. But if the, if the change comes to eliminate, and there's been discussion almost every year to eliminate 3-2 as a, as a beer class. And if that happens, the question would be, would they then allow regular beer sales in a convenience store, as, as they do almost everywhere else? Stay tuned. It's a, it's a hotly debated topic almost every year at the legislature.
Anyone else have any questions?
Well, I was trying to figure out how many of the Love's Travel actually sell beer? Because, I mean, it's our decision if we're going to let them sell beer or not. They're applying for a license. I don't know if anybody knows here, or if there's anybody from Love's here.
I don't know that. I, I know they do sell in Wisconsin, because I've been in a Love's in Wisconsin.
Okay. And I don't really have anything against it. I, I Googled and couldn't really figure it out. I saw one of the other towns made their decision if they were going to allow the Love's to sell in their town. So I, I was just trying to get a feel for that, if it was favorable or not favorable.
We would have to, as a, as a city, have a business reason for denying them a license that's allowed by our code. So there'd have to be, it isn't just a matter of, you know, whether or not they should. The, you know, prior council has provided for this in code, and since it's a business license, we'd have to have a business reason for not allowing them.
Okay.
There, that they were not eligible because of some past misdoings, that they didn't pass the background test, or checks, I should say. But we wouldn't just decide, or the city wouldn't just decide based upon whether they think 3-2 is a good thing to sell or not.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Sure.
I did see that it, they did pass all the background checks. So, okay.
I have a question. Do we need to amend the motion to include the change that you suggested, that they could hire 16 to 18-year-olds as long as they didn't sell beer? Because right now, the way it's written is they can't be in, employed in any rooms constituting the place in which those liquors are sold.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council member, I would suggest that you clarify that the enforcement of that rule will be within the owner-serving area in, in the sense that we're going to treat that as a room, since it's, you know, those, those areas are pretty well-contained.
Okay.
So what do we add to the, how do we amend it?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest the language be that the, the rule will be enforced within the counter, the counter checkout area. That those, those selling the product will have to be 18 or older.
So on, on page three, recommendation number four is, is what would get modified? You'd be referencing that.
Okay, I haven't been over there, but is there a common area where people take their food and sit down at a table that's outside of the counter area?
Right. But the, again, it's the employee.
I understand, but okay, the employees usually go and they wipe off the top, the counters and everything. So now when we get specific about it, does it mean they can't clean the tables? Because that's now in an area that's.
No, I think what I heard is that.
And what I'm saying is, don't say behind the counter.
No, 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 no. What I heard is that they can't sell it. Is that right?
Correct.
So we're not saying they can't be in the area where it's sold, which is kind of how this is written now. They just can't be the person selling it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. They can't be the ones ringing it up.
Right. But they can be, they can be in the room. They can wipe down the tables. They can do whatever, restock, whatever they have to do to do their job. That's, that's why I wanted it clarified, because I agree with you in this, especially in this market. You don't, you don't want to put any more constraints on businesses and trying to get help.
Yeah.
So what should the amendment be?
I'm just going to write it out and, and read it back, if that's okay?
Sure.
No person under the age of 18 years shall be employed to sell intoxicating liquors or 3.2% malt liquor. Strike the rest.
So I would like to add that to my amend, to my motion. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
For the addition. Thank you. No. Everybody got it clear? No 16-year-old can sell it, but they can empty the ashtrays and wipe the tables.
Are there ashtrays?
Or, yeah. All right, let's call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
Jesse, aye. Number 13, Planning Commission report. Chris King was scheduled, but I see Mr. Chair is here.
Good observer. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. As you know, Chris couldn't make it tonight, so this should be short and sweet then. I don't know if I can stand up to her standards, but I'll try my best. We, the Planning Commission met on August 17, 2022, and the first thing on the agenda was a public hearing and discussion concerning a city code amendment updating the shoreland management ordinance and development standards related to shoreline there by amending chapters 7A and 7E of the city code. This action was in response to a letter from the DNR dated May 19, 2021, regarding the St. Clair Lakes project area. There was no response when it came to the public hearing. Nobody made any comments or anything. And in our discussion, we didn't have much of a discussion either, the Planning Commission. It's kind of fort-right, the drafts and that. And we voted unanimously to vote on both issues that night. And we voted yes to, I recommend it, send it to you.
Any questions, anyone?
It was 26 pages, if you read it.
Yeah.
It's kind of just an update, isn't it, Elizabeth? Kind of?
Yeah. Yes, it's just, it's a model ordinance that the DNR has model language for the, for the shoreline ordinance. And we added a few tweaks to it, but we didn't really change a whole lot of language. The DNR reviewed it, and this is the outcome of that review, is what you have before you.
Yeah, this is Sue. Thanks for that clarification, because I wasn't at that meeting. I was just curious on, and so you answered the one question. That was the DNR that did most of the changes on it. Was there any, was there any connection between this and the St. Clair Lakes?
Part of the settlement agreement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, it was part of the settlement agreement that we reached a couple of years ago for the prior project that set, created the pattern for St. Clair Lakes. And so this is one of those items that we agreed to do in, in the settlement. And in fact, we were really required to do since we were out of line with state statutes. And so for both reasons, it, it needed to be updated. And the, the DNR actually worked with us, they gave us a couple extra months to, to get it done, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I'll make the motion to approve the Shoreland Ordinance 2202, which is in pages 11 through 35. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And I also will make the motion for the approval of the Shoreland Ordinance 2202 publication summary. That's on pages 36 and 37. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions or discussions?
Mr. Mayor, it is a resolution. I realize I didn't include it, but I believe this one will, kind of will just take the next number, so it'll be Resolution 2220.
I'll stand corrected. I won't repeat it. Do we have a second?
This is Janet, second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
All right, moving right along to number 14. A motion and discussion of the approval of the David Harschenko Development Agreement and Minor Updates and Plans, pages 38 through 56, and A1 through 8 in our additions. I'm sorry?
He's on Zoom. Mr. Harschenko's on Zoom.
Oh, okay, Ron.
Chris.
I mean Chris, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ron. And now, moving on to Chris.
Yes.
All right, go for it.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so basically, our minor update is three units were added to the overall project, and the, one of the entrances to the parking garage level was relocated, and that was a recommendation by the city's engineer to improve grading across the front of the building. So there should be a site plan that was attached, so you can kind of see where the new entrances along the north side, and then your outlet B.
Chris, this is City Attorney Bill Griffith. I think you just said three units added, but your documents said two units were added. So I just want to clarify for the council whether it's two or three units.
It ended up being three. When we initially talked about possibly changing the unit count, it was thought it was only going to be two, but the way it ended up working out was making everything symmetrical, we actually added three units, but we're still obviously under that 159 max. And then we did add the additional parking spots needed to accommodate three more units.
Oh, you see, the updated, updated memo, causal three. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just indicate that it's fairly typical, we don't have this in our ordinance, but it's fairly typical in zoning ordinances under a PUD to make minor modifications without having to go back through the process. And so since we're at the development agreement stage, we thought we could incorporate it in the development agreement, since you haven't yet approved the development agreement. That's one item that we're requesting with tonight's approval of the development agreement. And then also, if that's done, we will incorporate these plans as, as new exhibits to the development agreement and finalize the development agreement. But you can approve, you have authority to approve both tonight. So if you're comfortable with that, that's how we would go forward. Otherwise, you know, it would essentially be a do-over, and that would take us back, you know, 60 days and through the Planning Commission, there's some relatively minor
I'll make the motion to approve the minor plan changes as listed in the memo dated 8/23/2022 for the landings of Columbus Project by Apollo Development, Chris and David Harschenko. Are there any second motion? Two separate motions?
Two separate, two separate motions, Mr. Mayor.
So is there a second on that motion?
This is Sue, I'll second.
So it's moved and seconded? No, is there any questions or discussion?
I have a question, but not about, but not about what they're suggesting. It had, it has to do with their, the conditions. And I just want you to correct my recollection. So one of the things that I thought I would see and hear, but maybe I'm remembering incorrectly, was their willingness to abide by the community standards that they were going to provide for us. I thought that was going to be one of the conditions that we were going to add. But I know we had a lot of discussion, and I can't remember exactly where we landed on that. I know that they, the property management company had them, and they were going to share them with the, with the city. And I think the city was going to share them with the Planning Commission and us, because we wanted to see them. But then, I think we had the discussion about, is there a way to hold them accountable to their standards they're providing themselves? And that's where my mind gets fuzzy, if we were going to make that a condition, or if there was some other tool we were going to use. But I didn't see it here, so it's making me ask the question. And I don't want to hold up the motion, but I, if we could get clarification at some point on that.
Yeah, and I had that same question.
Okay.
Yes, was, was that in relation to what Bob Behrens was talking about? Is that?
Actually, Barb is the one that brought it up, um, during the planning commission discussion.
That's correct. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, we added the, specifically added the amenities, we did not add the community standards. So when we look back at the motion, the amenities were included in the motion, and the community standards were to be a handout or provided by the, the developer.
Mm-hmm. But I think, but I think the discussion, and I, I mean, that was, we were going to do that, but we also wanted to make sure that, you know, that, that they were held accountable to those. And, and I know we had, like, what's the best way to do that? And I just don't remember where we landed. I thought we decided it was going to be referenced in the conditions, but maybe I'm wrong. So maybe that can be a, an ask of the staff to go back and look into that. And if we have to take it up as a sep, separate amendment to the conditions, we can. I just don't want to lose that thread.
Right, and it, we'll, we'll go back and, and review the discussion. The specific motion that came to us when we were drafting the document was to make the amenities a condition of the development approval.
Yeah, and I think it was, the two were kind of tied, so, and you might be right, and maybe that, that wasn't where we were going to put it, and we were going to do something else, I just don't remember what it was.
Okay.
Okay. So I second your motion.
Any other questions or discussion?
Did you already have a second?
Yep, we have a second. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
And Jesse, aye.
So... Before you move on, I, I do have one additional request, and actually, it's a, if Chris Harschenko's on the line, he has requested a 60-day extension on the purchase agreement. We can draft that with your motion, and it doesn't have to come back here, because it's just a 60-day extension. It's not significant in terms of the drafting. First, I'd like to hear from Mr. Harschenko, an explanation why that's needed, and then we would hear from you whether you're comfortable with that extension. We have granted other extensions to people's project in contract.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, this is, this is Chris Harschenko with Apollo Development. There's a couple of reasons for asking for that extension. One of them is the contingency on receiving all governmental approvals, and we are currently being held up by the Race Creek Watershed District. We were hoping to get in, in August for the approval, then they pushed it to September 14th, and then just Monday, they pushed it to September 28th for their review. We've been made aware of several issues or concerns that need to be addressed, and we're not 100% sure how those are going to be handled, or what's going to be required, how long those changes are going to take to be incorporated into our building and site design, and being that our contingency period expires September 1st, we'd need a minimum of 30 days just to get past the review date. And then if there's any changes, we're going to be, you know, another extension to get it done, so that's why we're just going for the 60-day extension right now. Hopefully get all those approvals in that amount of time and can move on.
Thank you for that clarification. So we have to add that in to this motion?
Well, it would be a separate motion, Mr. Mayor, it would give the staff authority, along with the city attorney, to draft the amendment and authorize you and the city administrator to sign it. We don't have to, because otherwise, we will go out of contract, and the contract, you know, basically, we'd have to reenter the contract.
All right. So I'll make the motion on the top of the page first, to approve the development agreement as presented, delegating the city staff and city attorney the authority to make minor edits and add updated exhibits. Is there a second?
Well, no, because we have to clarify whether that was even part of the original motion.
I'm sorry?
We will clarify, we'll listen to the audio of the meeting and clarify whether that was, I remember the discussion, and one of the things got incorporated as a condition, and the other didn't, so.
I think, yeah, and I just, yeah, so just let's clarify that. But this, are you asking why we're doing this motion, Elizabeth? Is that what your question was?
I just wanted to make sure that that request was in the motion.
Oh.
That you didn't mean that you were, you know, authorizing us to, to change, if, you didn't mean whatever, whatever the outcome of that reference was, I wanted to make sure that was in the motion.
Got it.
So how do we add that?
No, you don't need to, she was just asking for clarification.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
So it's moved and seconded? Any more questions or discussion?
Yeah, this is Rob, I just had a question, and probably directed at Bill, so under Section 18 insurance, so it says that they will put coverage on subcontractors, developers, the developer will put it on subcontractors. So would that, in the event that a worker on that site didn't have work comp, would that cover that worker in the event that he was injured on that project?
The, generally, what happens is the subcontractor's coverage is primary, but if there is, for some reason, a lapse in coverage, then, then the, the, the developer's coverage would cover that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But generally, the, you know, we probably understand the way this works, is the general makes sure the subs are covered, the developer makes sure the general's covered, so that the developer isn't taking on that responsibility. But if for some reason there wasn't coverage, that's, that would cover them.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anything else from anyone?
I have a question about minor edits. What are minor edits?
Minor edits generally mean they don't change the substance of the, the document. For instance, there's connection fees that need to be calculated, though that's just a matter of math. And the minor edits are to add the exhibits. So it doesn't change the conditions of approval, doesn't change anything that is substantive. It's just filling in about three blanks for the connection fees and adding the exhibits, which have already been approved by the council. And, and we do this with virtually every development agreement.
That answer your question, Shelley?
Well, I, I don't like to have to bring this up, but I don't think that, like, changing the caribou coffee from a, a place you sit down to a place that's drive-through was minor, so it's not going to be anything like that, right?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Okay, I'm good.
I, I would be very loathe to make that kind of change without coming back here.
Okay.
Including the unit count. I mean, that's why we wanted to make sure that the council, see, something like density, use, any layout, all of that should come back, at least to the council, if not to the Planning Commission. So on a development agreement, we wouldn't take a development agreement to the Planning Commission. But you understand, we're filling in blanks, we're adding exhibits that have already been approved by the council.
Okay. All right.
Anything else from anyone?
I just have one question, and I have no experience with developer agreements. I did read through the whole thing, it looked pretty standard. I'm sure you do a lot of them, and is this pretty standard? Or are there things in here that have been asked for that are non-standard?
Mr. Mayor and Council, there was very little developer negotiation on this, this particular document, and so we were pretty much in agreement with Chris Harschenko and David Harschenko. They, there were a few minor changes, but sometimes we go, particularly on some of the large subdivisions, we go extra innings, and we sit in a room, and we negotiate, you know, language. We didn't need to in this case, it followed the pattern of Hy-Vee, Caribou, and the other projects in the Northeast quadrant. So this is very standard. We've, we've improved, I, I'd like to say we improved over time some of the language in our contracts, and we had an exercise this summer where we created a forms bank for the city because we wanted to have more standard language. We didn't want to just modify the last one on the shelf, so that's something we're now working with.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to say it's very, very well drawn up, reading through it, it seems to cover everything, so.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, if you're comfortable giving us the authority to enter into a 60-day extension, we would do that before the current contract contingency period runs out.
So you want another motion for that?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that the city staff will extend the agreement for 60 more days. Anything else in there, I should say?
No, Mr. Mayor, that'd be sufficient.
Is there a second?
This is...
Go ahead.
This is Sue, I'll second.
It's moved and seconded? Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Anything else to add, Chris?
No, that, that covers it. We're making, via quick update, we're making good progress on the building design and getting the structure defined, and, yeah, hopefully, we have it all figured out after this Race Creek Watershed District and, and get going. So I'd like to thank the city council and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So when would you hope or anticipate breaking ground? Before winter or in the spring?
We, we're still hoping before winter. As, as you know, sometimes that can be late January, but other times it comes in November, so we're always hopeful, and we've started plenty of projects in, in the middle of December, so it is, it is still doable.
Good. Well, we're looking forward to the progress. So, thank you, and have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Engineer Report, 2022 Project Updates.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, Kevin Bittner, City Engineer. Just to provide some updates on current projects going on. The Kettle River Heights project, paving has been completed beginning Friday and probably into next week, they're going to be doing some shouldering and some topsoil work, and then we got seeding after that, and then some punch list items to take care of, but the project is nearing completion. Our 182nd Lane, I'm not going to call it a cul-de-sac anymore, I'm going to call it an enhanced turnaround project. That will begin tomorrow, and that project shouldn't take long to complete, and the property, the adjacent property owners have been notified of the impending work, so that should be done shortly as well. Our West Freeway Drive project, we're going to be approving a purchase agreement for property acquisition there, so another hurdle completed. And we're currently working on our environmental permitting, as we've discussed in the past, so that's been the most recent snag, I would say, in the project. It'll probably take another, at least another month to work through that process, and before we can hopefully get to a point where we can bid the project. So we, we're still hoping for a fall bid. Whether we can get going this fall yet or not remains to be seen, but we hope to at least get some work done yet this year. Any questions on any of those items?
How many butternut trees are we up to now?
Two.
Oh, two.
At least we think there's two. The next step in the process is to collect a sample from the tree, which typically is a small twig, and a picture to be sent in so that the species can be verified, so.
So they're sending it into, like, 23andMe to do their DNA profile?
Right.
For trees?
So... Is it tagged, so we can go look at it, or is it tagged out there, so we can go look at it?
They're not tagged.
No?
So.
We should put a fence around it.
Wouldn't it be sad if a beaver came and took down both of them at the same time?
I can ask our environmental person to tie a yellow ribbon around it next time.
At least take a picture, we'd all like to learn what a butternut tree looks like.
So. Next item is our, associated with West Freeway Drive is approval of right-of-way plat number two. Basically, this just establishes right-of-way for the, for the new alignment for the roadway. If you're looking at the plat now, parcel two is all on city property, and that encompasses both the roadway and our stormwater ponds. And parcel one is the private property that we're acquiring later in this meeting. And so I would request approval of the right-of-way plat, and with that, once it's approved, we'll get it recorded tomorrow.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the City of Columbus right-of-way plat number two for the Northwest Freeway Drive project. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
No, any questions, anyone, or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Next two items are approval of pay requests. Both pay requests, number one, the first one is for two-part construction, this is This is for the Hornsby Street improvements associated with the Loves Travel Plaza. The amount is $454,577.45. And this is eventually we'd be repaid by by Loves. I guess I don't know the the mechanism for that process. But the city will get their money back on that one.
Would someone like to make that motion?
So I'd move to approve the pay request number one for Park Construction Company for the 2022 Hornsby Street reconstruction project in the amount of $454,577.45.
So Rob, I'll second that.
So it's moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And the next approval request is for pay request number one to Valley Paving. And this is for the 2022 Kettle River Heights Improvement Project for $306,295.36.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I can move to approve pay request number one for Valley Paving Incorporated for the 2022 Kettle River Heights Improvement Project in the amount of $306,295.36.
I'll second that motion. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, this is Rob for Kevin. I had drove down there this afternoon just to kind of check it out. I did notice there's a lot of water pooling in the in the cul-de-sac at the end. I don't know if that's the way it was before, just kind of how the drainage is. One of the neighbors walked out when I was looking at it and mentioned like that not being backfilled yet and what it's going to look like when it's backfilled and then seeding. So you addressed those things for me, but.
Yeah, the we do have a couple of bird paths on the project, and that will be put on the punch list to be addressed by the contractor. So, yeah, we do. We do have made note of those items.
Okay, so this isn't a full final draw then at this point?
It is not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. I have nothing further, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kevin. Attorney's report, number 16.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you have what is next to final form of a resolution denying the conditional use permit for the Building Trade Contractor Office. The application was made by Park Construction. So at your last meeting, you directed the city attorney's office to prepare the resolution. We went through, you know, basically each and every line and updated it. But the the biggest change would be the final whereas where we try to capture the council's comments and observations made at that that last meeting. So if you haven't had a chance to to look at the document, certainly that's a paragraph that you should direct your attention to. Otherwise, I'll stand for questions before your action.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill?
And Councilmember Wagaman, you'll.
I'll abstain.
The you'll actually be recusing yourself because you you don't vote on it at all.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I noticed there wasn't anything about traffic, the traffic increase in that area.
Mr. Mayor and Council, one of the difficulties in making that finding is the prior reports that the capacity of the roadway was adequate for the traffic proposed. However, the council could find that notwithstanding the capacity being sufficient, that the concentration of heavy traffic, heavy trucks, which was mentioned in that council action, is your concern. Because the previous finding, I believe in the engineer's memorandum, is that the carrying capacity of Lake Drive is sufficient for the trucking operations. So that's why we didn't specifically call that out. But the council said, I think Councilmember Logrin, you in particular, said you're concerned with the heavy heavy industrial uses near residential property. So if you want to add along with trucking, if you want to work that in, I'm happy to do that.
There is a there is a finding where it says, whereas planning commissioners articulated concerns about existing traffic congestion on Lake Drive during peak hours and the impact of additional truck traffic on the scale presented by the applicant. Is that what you're looking for maybe, Shelley?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
There is a a whereas where it says.
Right, I'm just saying that in the in the end, it doesn't, you know, tighten it up. And I, when I look at this and then I see what was said here tonight, it looks like you were concerned about the immediate area. And I thought that we wanted to broaden that as far as the trucking was concerned. And maybe that's not possible. But it's not a question, I mean, the in some of the information that we got from the attorney, you know, they were talking about the fact that, you know, this is a county road and it's a trucking route and, you know, and that sort of thing. And that may be for the county, but that doesn't mean that Columbus has to, you know, increase that, you know, use. And so I guess I'm having a problem with it because, you know, with the number of trucks they're talking about going in and out and the people of Columbus have to use that road too. You know, it's going to slow things down. It's going to, you know, every business that we add that has this type of of use is is contributing to a problem we already have. And it's already been stated by many of the people, Rob mentioned it, going door to door. I've I've, you know, and so this doesn't address that in the, I guess, is what I'm saying. But if you think that the earlier that it doesn't need to be restated here, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Logrin, council members, the the recital which captures the planning commission's concerns was based upon the hearing, the public hearing and their subsequent meeting. So if if the council, I mean, this is your resolution tonight. So if you don't think this adequately captures your concerns, we should definitely mark it up in a way that would make the council comfortable that it reflects those concerns. What I was stating is both the applicant and our own engineers said the the roadway had sufficient capacity for the additional traffic. But the distinctions that I'm hearing are the additional traffic may be fine in terms of the volume of the the road, but it's close to residential, it's coming out of one site. And and that's that's your concern, is the concentration from the one site. It's a lot of trips near residential.
And and it's not, I'm not talking about the immediate residential. We're talking about things going through Columbus on those on those trunk highways. And, you know, if the if it's coming from other communities, there's nothing we can do about that. But it doesn't mean that Columbus has to contribute to it. And that's what I'm I'm saying, is that I don't want it to be, it's just the surrounding area. It's affecting all of Columbus. It's been affecting Columbus ever since, you know, Semstone went in and Pine Aggregate and, you know, some of these businesses that have the heavy trucking. You know, if if it's renting trailers or, you know, whatever, you know, that isn't allowed, you know, it's one thing. It's a whole nother thing when you're talking about crushing and pulling heavy loads in and out of Columbus.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think the the sentiment that you're raising, though, is best described in proximity to the use as it's proposed. Because the further you go from the specific park construction site, the more diminished the impacts of noise, of backing up, of beepers, of all of the impacts that are associated with the heavy trucking use. So that that's that's why I'm trying to kind of, that's why much of the resolution says proximity to residential, the nearness to residential. Because there's a very specific impact that can be measured near other residential sites that gets diminished as you travel down the road, a road that is a county road that is designed for heavy traffic. So I, how about if I take a a minute and try and craft what I'm hearing from you and see if it, we get a little closer to the mark? I certainly want the resolution to reflect the council's concerns. And and we had a verbatim transcript that Connor prepared, and I pulled out all of these statements from from the record.
It was in there.
Bill, I just, this is Rob, I had a question where it says that about the harmonious part. Is that included in this? That was a major concern of the planning commission?
It's in several places.
Okay.
Yep.
So I guess I'm 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 just curious, or not curious, a little bit confused that the the whereas that I read seems like it's saying what you're saying, Shelley. So help me understand what you're saying that's different than that.
Where are you looking?
So it's on page 62, and it says, "Planning commissioners articulate concerns about existing traffic congestion on Lake Drive during peak hours and the impact of additional truck traffic on the scale presented by the applicant." It just seems like that's capturing what your concern is, that they're that they're adding an increment on top of what's already congested.
I'm on 62. We're on there. I'm.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight wheres is down.
Or three from the bottom.
All right, articulated concerns about existing traffic, okay.
And the way the resolution works is the council adopts all the findings that went before. So those that that becomes your finding as well by virtue of the resolution. So you wouldn't have to restate it at the end because it's stated there.
Well, Rob, do you think that that, I mean, you indicated that you had talked to people when you went out talking door to door. Where were those people? My people that I talked to door to door were like on Potomac and.
That was exactly the trucking from Potomac where they're cutting over to
Right.
Highway 65.
Right.
It's using being being used as a main corridor.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's where they're usually coming from, is the freeway or the that corridor there.
Yeah.
And that, and also the effects, the effects on that road, that road that was supposed to be repaired. I think we talked about it when I first got on council, and they still haven't done construction on it, you know?
Right.
It's sinking. It's, I don't think it can sustain more.
My answer to you is I agree with that portion, but they're really talking, again, in that concentrated area. And, you know, being a representative for the people of Columbus, I feel like it isn't just affecting that immediate area, you know? So I guess I'm I'm having a hard time with that. The more trucks, the more people that come here and say they want a trucking concern, you know, or or that type of business, Semstone, Pine Aggregate, Zukowski Trucking, all these people that are coming in. And then the other entity that wanted to be in there that was going to fix trucks and then and they said that they were friends with people with Pine Aggregate and and.
Equipment transport.
Semstone, yeah. We're seeing more and more of these people wanting to come here, and you're just exacerbating the problem that we have already had in the past for Columbus. It's not just about, you know.
But you're, are you are you confusing this with the moratorium discussion? Because this is just about us saying no to park, this resolution.
Well, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. I mean, it's.
Well, they actually are two very separate things, as we've tried to make clear to the Waldox and others that that the moratorium is about the CI District in general and concerns throughout the district. This this resolution is about denying a specific application. Those two should always be kept separate. But I would point out that the whereas clause that Councilmember Hagland brought up is not just limited to residential uses, it's it's more generalized. "Planning commissioners articulated concerns about existing traffic congestion on Lake Drive during peak hours and the impact of additional truck traffic at the scale presented by the applicant." So that isn't tied just back to residential uses. It's a general statement against heavy truck traffic on an already busy road. So I don't know if that.
Yeah, that park would have been contributing to.
Which park would have been contributing to. Then later on in the resolution, you as the council adopt all the findings of the planning commission and the staff, and then you make them your own by this resolution, plus we added four or five observations from your last meeting. So I I think it is there. But if if there's something you want us to add, we can certainly do that.
I guess the the problem I'm having is is that the equipment company, what was it called, the transport company?
Equipment transport.
Yeah. They came in first and we said, okay, you know, you fix them, you do whatever. And and what I'm saying is, is that in that case, that didn't have necessarily a problem with pulling stuff in and out. And park does have something pulling in and out, you know, with the heavy the heavy traffic. So I don't know. I, if you if you think, you think that this covers the traffic?
I think for this case it does, but with the moratorium it'd have to be.
All right.
No, I'm with you on the equipment transport. That was kind of a different deal to where they weren't coming and going all the time. The trailers are going to be stored offsite.
And full.
And then they were only going to work on them in the winter months at that facility. So it's a little
Right.
less invasive in my mind, but.
And it was also just a concept review, so they were just testing the waters, I think, when we when we heard them. We might have said yes or no, depending on what specifically would have been in the in the application.
Okay.
I have an attempt, and so does Elizabeth. Let me just try this one, because I think I think this may capture it. So in on page 64 where there's the last long whereas clause, which are your council observations in addition to all the other findings. We would add a new number five after periodic watering. The amount of ingress and egress by heavy trucks and equipment to and from. And you have to help me, Lake Drive or?
Yep, Lake Drive.
I just didn't know if there was another access point because I don't have the plan in front of me. Is that, council member, is that capturing your concern?
Yep.
Okay. And so then that would become five, and then five would become six.
Anybody else have anything to add? You happy with that, Shelley? Good enough, yeah? Would you like to make the motion?
Do we know what the resolution number is?
Seventeen, I believe.
Oh, yeah, right here in front of me. So move to approve resolution 2217, a resolution recommending denial of a conditional use permit for a building trade contractor office for park construction located at 137th Avenue Northeast.
Is there a second?
Shelley will second it.
So it's moved and seconded. Are there any other questions? Or do we have to add this extra line in, Bill?
The, yes, I can read it for the motion, and I've handed it to Connor, but it would say, new five, the amount of ingress and egress by heavy trucks and equipment to and from Lake Drive, and then six, council member discussed these and similar concerns. That's already in the motion.
So I had a question on it too, on the motion. Where the bill, like I talked about, you know, in opposition to the moratorium, the building trade contractor office, this is more of a trucking outfit than a contractor office. I get they're a contractor, but they're a heavy industrial trucking outfit, not a building contractor shop. I mean, you're kind of...
And that's the problem with our ordinance in defining it, so I know I kind of shuddered at that language too, but it's like, I don't know.
Is there any way to modify that so we're not...
I took that right from the heading of the moratorium, so I did an exact cut from the...
Because I guess I don't know how to vote on it, being in opposition to that moratorium. Now I'm pretty much be voting against what I said before, right?
Did you vote two meetings ago against this?
What's that?
You were for denying park, you...
I was, yeah, in favor of denying it, for the matter of the crushing and the non-harmonious, you know, and the heavy trucking.
Right. This is just a reference to the moratorium. It isn't in opposition to the uses. It's just referencing the fact that there was, that the council adopted a moratorium on this use.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
I'll have, until, actually until we get to the item regarding West Freeway Drive. I don't know if...
So the next issue is the motion to authorize execution of a purchase agreement and acquisition of property. I believe it's a Bloom Brothers property, pages A9 through 26.
Mr. Mayor and Council, at your closed meeting, we reached agreement, council directed us to reach agreement on a price for acquisition of the right-of-way property, person number one in the right-of-way map, plat map that you adopted earlier. And that is in the resolution that's attached, 22-18. And then as an exhibit to that is the purchase agreement that we would use to memorialize that acquisition. It would also give the staff and mayor and administrator the ability to work through the closing documents and get the property acquired. So this is really formalizing what you directed at the last meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 22-18, a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement and acquisition of a Bloom Brothers property for use as public right-of-way. Is there a second?
Rob, I'll second that.
So it's moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. City council members report. Shelley?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
I'm going to report on behalf of the Personnel Committee, so there's a report in the additions, I think it's A1 of the additions, it's the last page of the new additions. So there's two, there are two items to discuss. One is a park board appointment. We had an applicant interested in serving on the park board, and we interviewed him on August 16th. His name is Stephen Ray. He lives in the Pryner Preserve neighborhood. He's been here since May, and moved here from Shoreview where he was a resident for 33 years. He's done a lot of volunteering in his, he's a retiree, but in his former work life, he was in marketing and did some writing positions in both international and domestic companies. He is currently working part-time for TCT Transportation, that is a company that drives children with disabilities to school. He has spent a lot of time in parks, both in our area and in other areas. He served in Shoreview on the Bikes and Trails Commission, so he has a little bit of experience that way. And he expressed a recognition of the challenge of balancing the fiscal responsibilities and priorities of the city with trying to provide a community meeting place and a recreational resource to the community. So he's well aware of that challenge that we have. Both Mayor Pryner and Elizabeth were part of that interview, so if there's other things you think would be helpful that you want to add in on your impressions, please do.
I thought he was a good candidate for the position, and he had done a lot of work in Shoreview, or not a lot, I think, a year perhaps before they moved. But he seemed that he was well versed in everything and willing to step up and do the work. So I agreed with Janet and Elizabeth that I thought he'd be a good guy.
He also was interested in the potential of having the park board be more active or lead the charge in terms of community activities and community events. Hello, we were so happy to hear that. So he's lots of enthusiasm and excitement for all of that, so we were also excited for that part of it. So with that, then I would move that the council appoint Stephen Ray to the Columbus Park Board. Oh, you're probably already having, yes, move to approve the appointment of Stephen Ray to the Columbus Park Board for a term of two years, ending December 31st, 2024. He is, he's taking the position that Mark Daly had.
Rob, I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Yay, okay. So then the second order of business here is step increase request, and this is for our Public Communications Coordinator, Connor, who was hired on February 2nd and is now six months into the job. Boy, it just seems like yesterday, Connor, I can't believe six months has gone by. So we hired Connor in at step one, and as per our policy and procedures, after six months, there's a review, and City Administrator Mersko did that review recently, probably this week or last week. And Connor's doing really well. In particular, he's extremely talented at communicating with different groups of people and allowing them, an audience, to articulate their issues, and has excellent writing skills and the ability to create media messages that create awareness. And the evidence of that is the interest we've had in some of our volunteer positions. I mean, it's your newsletter, I think, that has brought in some of that interest, so good, good work you. So with that, what we would recommend as the policy or as the Personnel Committee is to advance Mr. Keith to step two in the salary range for the Public Communications Coordinator, effective pay period 19, which is August 27th, 2022.
I'll second that motion. Is there any questions or discussion?
And this is a budgeted increase.
Anybody? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Congrats, Connor.
Good job, Connor.
Thank you for your good work.
Congratulations. Number 18, Public Works Report, Jim.
You don't have a report?
Or does Rob have a report?
Don't report.
Okay.
Well, any other people have a report?
What about you?
Do you have a parking board? Or do you do that report?
I can do it.
The Road and Bridge?
We had a Road and Bridge.
I just didn't want to step on his toes if he had anything else, so...
It went good, and we were done by seven o'clock. And Jim can give us the details. Go for it, Jim.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we had a Public Works Advisory meeting last night. It was, it was pretty short and sweet. I was just, wanted to inform them on kind of what I was looking at for equipment, told them that I had ordered the road grader back in April that we all talked about, and that I was looking to increase some funding for different line items and stuff. We kind of talked about this stuff, so I'll be brief already, but we talked about it at the last workshop. So they were on board with increasing the Public Works Fund by 20,000, bumping up the multipliers because of the equipment going up so much in price every year. And then we talked about the Blacktop Fund by increasing that multiplier to 4%. And then increasing calcium chloride by 5,000, gravel by 10,000, fuel by 5,000, and salt by 5,000. And then we just had some other discussions after that. So nothing, nothing crazy, nothing that I haven't already talked to you guys about already. And that's it, unless I miss something, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's the same old problem. Everything has gone up, and it has to be paid for and has to be budgeted for, so...
So that's all I have, unless somebody asks some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Number 19, Public Communications Coordinator Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am bringing us back to a discussion we've had about a month and a half ago last. It was about archiving social media posts, both that we put out and those we receive. Just as a little recap, since May, the city's been in conversation with representative from Archive Social about tackling this sort of project. You guys' reception to the proposal was initially positive, but you requested further information. One request was made by, the council was to research one of Archive Social's competitors, J. Theon. Despite twice requesting a sales call, demo, trial, we heard nothing from them, which is a little concerning to say the least. So that sort of crossed them off the list a little bit. And in addition, since then, we've also had the opportunity to trial that in-house. Included on the back, starting on page 65 is the memo I'm sort of reading from here, but if we continue on, onto page, starting on 74, I printed out a few of the reports that I was able to run during this trial period of Archive Social. So you can sort of see the sorts of reports that I can conduct. Were able to document a message from Facebook, where they reached out to us through our direct messages. Another one is our post about Loves. A third on page 79 showcases a post that I made alerting people to Lake Drive being closed in Lino Lakes along Lloyd 35, which also shows a comment received by someone living in Columbus, asking a question where I was able to respond. So it documented all of that in real time. And I think there might be one more. I'd also done Twitter too, where it shows a tweet from Loves, who tweeted at Columbus, so we've reached celebrity status now, where they thanked us for a tweet that we'd sent out from our Twitter, just sort of showcasing the new development that we've discussed this evening on Hornsby. So it's just sort of a little sampling of the sort of documentation, archiving that it does, not to jump the gun, but in a world where that is at our disposal in the future, I'm sure I can learn more and reach out to their sales team a little bit more to learn even more about the capabilities of what types of reports can be run and archiving that we can see and expand ranges. Some of the things I do know, I've also had the chance to dabble around with, is part of our social media policy is a monthly archiving of all of our posts, and there's a way to automate that through their platform, which allows us to just automatically download a file that shows everything that we've done from date X to Y, and we can set that up to be done automatically, so there's no going back and getting screenshots. So to sort of bring all of this together, after that trial and what happened with reaching out to competitors, we reached the point where I feel comfortable recommending using Archive Social. Down at the bottom of my memo on page 65, I detail that they have provided us a special pricing from starting September until the end of the year of $249 per month versus the $299 annually. And so the two proposals, should you want to go forward with this company and archiving our social media, would be to begin September 1 at $249 per month, so that comes up to $996, to begin archiving our social media posts and tweets and all those other fun things through the end of the year. Or I would also, if we don't want to go forward with that immediately, then my follow-up suggestion would be to consider budgeting for this rolling into the 2023 fiscal year, where that would be the $299 per month billed annually for a total of $3,588. If you have any further questions for me, I would love to answer them. I know you've also had legal questions in the past, not to throw Bill in the spotlight, but I'm sure he'd be able to help us out as well.
Any questions, anyone?
I was just curious about if we did sign up for it. It's each year, we don't have to sign up for like three or five years?
Yeah, it's my understanding it's an annual basis. So if come to find out in November, we don't feel like it's serving our needs, we're done December 31. Or, you know, where we could roll into next year and follow the same process, but yeah, it'd be an annual commitment.
Okay. Yeah, I thought you did a really good job with your research and documentation and examples, comparison, everything. Good job.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve Archive Social service for the remainder of 2022 at a rate of 249 per month, starting September 1, 2022, for a total of $996 for the remainder of the year. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions?
I just wanted to know how Elizabeth felt about it.
You know, you have to start somewhere, and I think this is something that we've talked about, I believe, over the past few years. I think Jessica brought it up, and I don't think we had as much momentum. But now I think with the hotel, the new apartment coming in, I think with Loves coming in, I think we're going to have a lot more traffic, and it's better to start small. And I think having the opportunity to experiment in the next three months to see if it works and see what kind of traffic we have, I just think it's a good opportunity to see where we fall in the numbers.
Anyone else? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Anything else, Connor?
Nothing further from me this evening, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Assistant City Administrator Report. There is not one tonight. Then we'll go to the City Administrator's Report.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I have one thing on the agenda, and that is the amended resolution 2131, as it adds the furnace and air conditioner unit in order to help the air circulation in the administrative offices. So there were some amendments to add that language so that we are eligible to use ARPR dollars for that improvement. And so it would be amended resolution 2131 for a new resolution, which would be resolution 2219.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 22- I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2219, a resolution authorizing American Rescue Plan Act expenditure and making related budget adjustments. Is there a second?
This is Shelley, I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, in light of approving that resolution, we can now then approve the furnace, air conditioning, and duct upgrade for the project, and our recommendation is to award that contract to Kramer Mechanical.
So I'll make the motion to approve the furnace, air conditioning, and duct upgrade and replacement bid from Kramer Mechanical in the amount of $12,050. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, this is Rob. Correct me if I'm wrong, did somebody ask to get multiple bids last time? I believe it was Sue.
Somebody, it wasn't me, but I think, Jim, you said...
They did work through that. So I attempted to reach out to a couple different people. Kramer was the only one I gave a bid, anybody else find at that point. So we kind of talked about that at the...
Okay, yep. As long as we tried multiple, I'm good with that. Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Anything else, Elizabeth?
I have nothing further.
Then we're already down to Letter E, announcements and reminders. Our next budget meeting will be 8:31, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Planning Commission will be on September 7 at 6:30, EDA on the 13th of September at 5:30, City Council at 9:14, at 6:30, which will already be halfway through September. Yikes.
Yikes.
So anyway, is there anything else anyone would like to say? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned.